Okay, we are live.
Thank you. I'll wait till 3 o'clock, I guess. It's now 3:00 PM here in lovely Kiowa Island and I'd like to call to order the May 6th regular meeting of the Kiowa Island Planning Commission being livestreamed via video conference. Could you call the roll, please, Petra?
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Doughty.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Iwan.
Here.
Moffett.
Here.
Ms. Messerman. Ms. Gail.
Her audio is not on.
And Mr. Sensen.
Here.
Gail did raise her hand. She's here. First item of business, approval of minutes from our April 8th meeting under tab 1. Could I have a motion to approve?
So.
In a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or changes required in these minutes? I'll note on page 3, the third line from the bottom. I believe the sentence agreed, he stated the work on the speed tables and the other, rather than other the, improvement projects that were, get rid of the word on, set as a result of the parcel 13 development. And on the fourth page, in two places, they're called barrels, but I believe John called them barriers in his remarks. And I think that's a better word than barrels. Any other comments or suggestions? With the noted changes, I'll, I guess we'll do this by roll call, Petra. If you could call the roll. Petra? I vote aye. John?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Bill?
Ah.
Britt?
Aye.
Gail? Okay, she votes aye. And Andy?
Aye. Gail, hit the bottom of your screen, the left-hand corner, and unmute your mic. Don't do it.
Now it's.
There you go.
No, it's muted now.
No, you were on for a second.
Just click on it.
Oh, it's muted. Wonder if her volume's up.
I'll try to message her and get that worked there.
Okay. We have no old business. We have one item of new business, a subdivision application. John, if you want to walk us through that, please, under tab 2.
Yes. You all able to see the slides correctly?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
All right, today's application, SBD 20-00003. This is a right-of-way naming. And it has been reserved as Vacation Way. This is in the West Beach area. It's an existing lot that is on RST 2. This is the site where the Conference Center now sits under the West Beach, under the Kiowa Island Golf Resort. The proposed right-of-way is already been constructed. This is just being proposed to be renamed, or named, rather, Vacation Way, which has been approved and reserved through Charleston County 911. The particular right-of-way is proposed as 35 feet wide. And I said it sits adjacent to the visitor center. Welcome check-in visitor center for the resort. There's a fairly simple request. As noted in your materials, under that section 12-23, the commission does have that authority to provide approval of the authorizing a new street name. And so, it's fairly simple. I don't have any particular other comments regarding this particular application. It does meet the standards for the road code as it was built, constructed through site plan review approval over a year ago. So that will be all, Mr. Peterson.
Well, could you, could you tell me where the parcel line adjustment is?
Yes, so the parcel line adjustment, the actual parcel here, it shows to the northern side of the lot, 35-foot width that would take up exactly where that access drive is currently located.
Oh, okay.
And so, it's essentially cutting out a roadway from this larger parcel.
Okay.
To be named. And as to effectively give the visitor center a unique address, mapping out to the entire West Beach new developments with the Conference Center, Cougar Point Clubhouse, and the future hotel, simplifying that address for the visitor center check-in. And Norm, you can maybe speak to this specifically in the resort's desire to do that. But that's, that's where the exact, that's where the right-of-way, the adjustment in the property line is, Mr. Peterson.
Okay, good, John. I appreciate that. I didn't, didn't understand that. Could we have a motion to approve this application from Kiowa Tennis Club LLC for a property line adjustment and naming the right-of-way Vacation Way? If we could have a motion to approve.
Oh, well.
And the second. It's moved in second. And are there any comments or concerns about this?
Fred, one question. Where is the terminus of this road? Does it end where it shows on the survey?
So on the plat, that, that will be the end. I'm trying to exactly determine that for you for, in one of the images there. But just as past, past the parking lot edge before the actual entrance of where the, the end of the Conference Center building is, that's sort of where that demarcation line kind of sits in the field, if you will.
So it has access to the Conference Center parking lot as well?
Yeah, so this, this, this right-of-way, if you were to turn down there, you would be able to gain access to the, to the parking garage of the Conference Center in the parking lot in the rear.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing done. All those, well, let's, Petra, are you here? Could you call the roll? Or we do it again? Okay, I'll vote aye, John.
Got it. I'm here. I just, it's me.
Could you call the roll, then?
Yes, sir. Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Daddy.
Ah.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Iwan.
Aye.
Mr. Moffett.
Aye.
Ms. Messerman, raise your hand.
Thank you, Gail. Your, your non-verbal communication is excellent.
They're gonna need to hit you flashcards.
Our next item is correspondent staff comments. John, you could walk us through your memo update.
What I did was highlight just sort of, there hasn't been a significant, a lot of changes since the last update. As you know, the Kiowa Island Parkway is still being worked upon. Crews are still operating on that. As far as permits have still been coming in, even though we're sort of working remotely, so we still receive zoning permits and subdivision review requests. And the last sort of two months, including up to today, that's total 33 permits. Regarding subdivision, we did approve administratively one subdivision plat, which was a lot combination on, a lot combination on Dungannon. All. And then two other plats are sitting in review currently now. Another lot exemption, or a lot combination in Riverview, and then additional conditional sub of the platform, front nine. If you recall, the, the front nine lane that came before preliminary approval two months ago. Regarding Duneside Road, a lot of those improvements on the roads aspect have been completed. And so, Kika is still doing some work around the pool area. I don't know if you've driven down that area recently to kind of see some of that work. The speed tables have been put in place. So right now, we don't have an anticipated date, and I'll get with Kiowa Partners and whatnot to make sure that we get a date for when we are able to inspect before that application comes back for review for front of this body. The other update I wanted to give you, right now, we're still having, council's still been having conversations on what public input and public meetings will look like. I mean, sort of COVID-19 and how we're doing things sort of remotely. And so, the conference of plan review that's still kind of in the window to kind of be set for the summer or early fall, but we're just kind of waiting to see how that maps out as far as a schedule-wise and what that looks like. So stay tuned for that as I'll brief you in the coming weeks, and sort of council still makes some determinations on, on the best way to kind of do that, protecting employees and the public moving forward. Don't have any updates from BZA at this moment. The final thing I want to know, or two things, rather, one is the upcoming, this Friday, is a continuing ed opportunity. This is part two in that sea level rise that APA has been putting on. If you recall, they shared that date, and this actually snuck up on me. So that's why I realized that that was this week and not the second week of May. Feel free to click on that link in the memo that I sent you. I'll send another reminder out with that, that link for you to register. But what it'll do is prompt you to register, and you just enter in your email address, so that it sends you that link. And you can do that from the comfort of your home. And not have to worry about coming into town hall. If you do sign up, just let me know, or Petra knows, so that we can have an account for our records. And then the final thing is that we do have one agenda item for our next month meeting, which is the Best at Rice, the annual extension for Captain Sam's, the preliminary plat. This would be number three of five. And so that request is scheduled for our June agenda. At this time, I don't know how that format, whether we be doing it this way or we be back in town hall. So just stand by on that decision on, on how we'll make that, that happen for the June agenda. And that completes my notes.
Thank you, John. Mr. Prickett, would you?
I apologize. I wanted to say thank you, but I'm, I'll go ahead and leave. I've enjoyed it very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Norm.
Before you do, John, a question on Duneside. One of the things Jimmy mentioned on, Jimmy barely mentioned on Monday at the KICA board meeting was that there are certain, well, his hidden mind landscaping items that have to be completed. Most of the construction of the, the speed bumps, et cetera, are done. He only got one minor question that was dismissed. But the important issue that I remember is the speed signs. There is no signage on Dune, Duneside now. There's supposed to be. And we need to see that before it's completed as well. You might just want to remind them that in addition to the landscaping, the speed signage is also part of the agreed improvements that needed to be made.
I add that to my notes and, and recall, once we circle back with both the community association and the partners, before bringing it back to you, I'll make sure that we sort of have a checklist of all of those things that should, should have been completed for review.
Good.
And thanks again, Norm. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
John, I think Andy was more, wanted us to be more proactive and tell Kika that we want to see speed zone signs.
Speed zone signs.
Yeah, before they think they're going to get it approved.
And reduce the speeds, not only signage, but the other, if you look at the other side of the St. Tessel side, if you will, of the road, those speeds are down to 15 miles an hour. Duneside should be every bit of that, if not less. And I, I was down there not two hours ago, and there's a wheelchair running down the middle of the road. There's people walking on the road. And, yeah, they opened up some corners, more visibility in some respects. But that road is not to be heavily trafficked.
Yeah, I know the, the speed limit, that will be something that Kika definitely has to administer. And so, we'll, we'll, we'll see where that, where that lies. But I, I can push that issue for you, just ensure. I want to make sure that was listed in one of, in the conditions outline. But, thank you for that.
Since there's an overage in the budget, they, they, I'm sorry, they're under budget. Probably have some money left over for signs.
Great. Mr. Prickett, if you'd like to give us a comments?
Uh, yeah. Were any of you able to listen to the council meeting yesterday? Because if so, you'll hear a lot of repetitive material. You can probably bounce off. If not, let me give you a quick briefing on everything that went on. First, the mayor talked, as you would expect, about the alligator incident. You know, a very unfortunate, sad situation. But to be fair, this is an incident as much caused by the victim as probably by the alligator. A person who, while being yelled at by everybody nearby to stay away from the water, literally went to the water line, if not in the water, to photograph the alligator with a video camera. And the alligator ended up grabbing the victim. There were two men there who attempted to hold her back from the alligator, but lost the battle. It was very sad, but clearly this person who is a mature female should have never been anywhere near the water line or near the alligators. So it's just a very sad situation and one that we may never understand what really happened. But terrible circumstance. Other important things that went on, there is a noise ordinance that was before council last month that got its first reading. And the reason for it is our current ordinance basically is not enforceable. It basically says that you can't have between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. You can't make noise that will disturb a neighbor. Well, does that mean you can't close your car door? I mean, there's no enforceability around it, because there's no standard. So what we've done, based on some issues that arose in the area where Timbers was constructed due to the noise of the air conditioning units and some of their mechanical equipment, they were able to suppress that noise. But the, the new ordinance that was given a first reading a month ago basically proposes that the noise level between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM be 60 decibels. That basically, that means if, if you are the neighbor and from your property, you can hear 60 decibels of noise from your neighbor, you can complain, and we can do something about it. With no standard, we couldn't do anything, as you would expect. 60 decibels is a loud-speaking voice. It's not a quiet voice. It's a loud-speaking voice, but no louder than that. So it's a pretty low standard. Anyway, in order to give the community a little bit more time to consider the impact of all of that, we postponed it and tabled it for another month, and we're going to give them some more information to think about it all. But we're not trying to be difficult, but we need a standard. Otherwise, we have an ordinance that makes no sense. Okay? We also talked about our budget for next year. This is a big item. As you know, the town's income is based on several things, not the least of which are the local county and state occupancy taxes. They're a big item for us, since we don't issue a property tax. We have already been hard at work, the staff and the Ways and Means Committee, at cutting away on the budget, because obviously our occupancy is going to be down across the board. Not only this quarter, but this new quarter that we're into, probably into the fall, and who knows, maybe for a while. So we're cutting expenses to the bone in order to try to survive this thing, but still operate the town. Unfortunately, the county announced the day before yesterday that prior to all of their past years, where they shared the county tax with all the towns within the county on a ratio of about 75/25. So they kept 75% of the county accommodation tax, gave us 25% of it. That's a big tax. They are not going to give us that in the fourth quarter, and they've said they are not going to give us any next year. That is a $500,000 hit to our budget. That's enormous. So while we're still in conversations with them, it appears there's little we can do about it. They have the legal right to do that. So we're going back at the budget and finding out other places that we can possibly cut in order to save money. There's not much we can do about it. They've got budget problems. We've got budget problems in every town up and down the coast that have budget problems. So be aware of that. We're going to have a, you know, a year or two of pretty tight expenses. Of significant importance is, as you know, our current ordinance relative to short-term rentals. Yeah, by our, by our current, I think it's 20-02, the current, or 2020-02, ordinance says that there is no short-term rentals can be accepted through May 15th of this year. We have let that ordinance lapse, and in fact, that will stay in effect. So starting May 16, short-term rentals will be permitted on Kiowa. This is in, in concert with pretty much all the coastal communities and what the governor has basically said he wants done statewide. So in order to do our best there, there's no sense in trying to legislate things we can't control. The mayor and the staff of the city is meeting this week, probably tomorrow, with MUSC in order to develop a set of guidelines for all of our renters, rentals, the big companies, as well as the individual rentals, in terms of what they need to do. Because the biggest source of a problem will be the turnover when you rent, and then a new party comes in. And as you know, people like VRBO and Airbnb have issued new guidelines to all of their people. And in most cases are saying there needs to be at least a one-day lapse between when somebody moves out and when somebody else moves in. And during 24 hours, most of the virus will die off by itself. There's also all sorts of rules about what needs to be cleaned, the doorknobs and so on, that typically wasn't cleaned before. When we get that guidance from MUSC, it would be the town's position that we need to get that published and out there. Whether or not we can provide an ordinance that says there must be a one-day rental, oh, gap, is unknown at this point. We'll have to consider that once we know more about what the guidelines look like. But I think we're moving into a phase where the town is going to have to be more providing guidance than legislating what people can and can't do. Now, some of that ordinance, like distance, not having parties, distancing on the beach, groups of 10, all of that stuff will stay in place. What goes away is the prohibition against rentals starting May 16. That is similar. Many of the other beach communities are opening it up a few days earlier, but we're going to stick with it since that's our current thinking anyway. So that's going on. We don't know about the resort, but they're considering opening slightly later, because they've got a whole bunch of protocols to go through and to understand in terms of distancing and how many rooms they can rent. The good news is the number of rentals scheduled for the next month or two is relatively low. In other words, people haven't been renting. So we don't have a big schedule we're facing, which will help us get into this. My guess is the resort may open, and, and don't take this as the little, you know, a few weeks later, as they get their people back, get the place geared up, and start operating more as a hotel. Other things. Oh. We had, we did pass a rule that, an ordinance that said that the shops at Fresh Fields, which is of course a point of contention for everybody, will, will need to post near their entrance their capacity, which is a new capacity based on the new guidelines. So if in a small store, you can have five people, it's going to say no more than five people can be in the store at one time. And if you don't put it at the door, people are going to walk in having no idea whether they should be there or not. Same is true with Harris Teeter. And Harris Teeter's rule about having one person per family in there will stay in place. So there may be times if the season picks up and gets busy where the town may elect to put a compliance officer at Harris Teeter to insist that people only go in with one person in the family. It's hard for Harris Teeter to enforce that with the same level of enforcement than a code officer could do. Not a police officer, because it's not a criminal violation. It's a statute, so we have to do the enforcement. Anyway, that'll stay in place. We also talked about the road project, the new lanes which have to be built to allow two sets of turn lanes to go into the property next to Fresh Fields that's owned by the resort. That construction start will start this next week, so you're going to see a lot more road building going on. The surface that's there now in most of the lanes is the permanent surface. It's up about three inches. So we went down two inches and then up three on the road itself, which is why we've had to raise the shoulders a little bit. They've also raised the guide rail, you know, where the accident occurred before you get to Mingo Point. That has, that was raised three inches. The repairs haven't been done on that guide rail yet, and that's because the insurance claim that was made by the town against the insurance company who insured the driver hasn't been settled yet, and we don't want to repair it. And so we've got the money to do the repairs, but that's all underway. The whole project will be done well before the Memorial Day weekend, which is when we need it all done, so we don't have a problem with the road. We also discussed the landscaping project, which was running to be done in parallel, kind of with the paving. We've gotten bids in from all of the bidders. There were a number of bidders, as you would expect. Two of the bids are extraordinarily competitive. It appears that the landscapers really need the business to keep their staff in place. This would be a big project for them. We were expecting bids in the $800,000 range. The low bid came in from a qualified firm at $616,000. Couple hundred thousand dollars less than we expected. What we are looking at now is whether we're going to do all four sections. Section, you know, section one is like the traffic circle and right around Fresh Fields. Section two and three are the big stretches. Section two is sort of the area that we're talking about where we've got to expand the lanes. Three is the big curve, and four is the entrance right there, just before you get to where you go through the gates. There is a difference of opinion at council about whether we should do it all, or we're going to take it apart. So we've got more work to do there to decide what we're going to do. If we do something, we've got to get it done right away. As soon as the road's done, we got to get this stuff in and get it done before the PGA. But that's a little bit up in the air. But that's a little bit up in the air. I think that's it. We did say that the umbrella services could go back into business. They have been banned as part of the social awareness thing. But as long as people, the beach patrol will keep people apart, as they've been doing, it's okay for them to have umbrellas. I think that's 90% of what went on. It went on for three and a half hours, so it was a very brief meeting. Questions?
Dan, I have a question. We were notified, everyone, by Kika that the plan to mitigate the flooding issues have been approved. Have they told the town when they expect to start that?
They may have, John. I don't know. Have they talked to you about that?
John Taylor?
I haven't got any word on when those would come in.
I don't know, Bill. My guess is they'd start pretty quickly. That was good. They needed, I think they got about 68% of the proposal or some good number. But I don't have an answer for you, Bill. Sorry.
No problem.
Dan, at the KICA meeting on Monday, the board meeting, they reported that they had all the permits in place for, I think, whatever Phase Four and Five are, the two immediate projects that they want to start. And they expect to start within a month.
Oh, that's good. Good.
The, what I would call the stream that runs out. And then there's a ponding that's going to be done around the main Vandross Gate.
Right, yeah.
Both two items, they're ready to go.
Good, good. Well, that's a better update than I've got. Thank you, Andy.
Any other questions or comments for Dan? Great. Petra, do we have any public comments? Petra?
I'm here.
Do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll do commissioner comments. John Moffett, any comments?
No, I don't have any.
Larry Iwan?
No comments.
Mr. Doughty?
No comments.
Britt Benson?
No comment.
Andy Capelli?
No more.
No more?
No more.
And Gail, you want to wave at us? Thank you for your comments. I see we are to the adjournment item. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.